Good evening and welcome to the fifth, twenty-five of the March meeting of the planning commission in housing task force in Connecticut. Let's do roll call. Next three votes, I'm here. Doug, crack here. All okay?
Yeah.
I know Kathy's out. Megan's out. Megan Juplis is...
Yeah.
Dennis is here. Yep. Jay is out. Megan for Kathy and Dennis for Michael. We have Chuck Chadwick. Good. Or anybody other...
No, just the commission.
Just the commission. Very good.
Right.
Let's quickly do the minutes. Get that out of the way.
I should do approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Give you the second.
Second.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Dennis. Dennis was quicker.
Any, any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed? All abstained? Any correspondence?
No.
Very good. Then, we're gonna move on to affordable housing. We have Maria DeMarco, President of Marco Management Company here. And she's gonna teach us everything we need to know. And then some.
Say more than I ever wanted to know. And good evening, everybody. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the reason I do all these presentations, I only do Old Saybrook because I live here. And I'm a resident of the city. So, that's why I'm here. But anyway, I run a small management company. We specialize, we have about a hundred people throughout the state. We specialize in affordable housing. And of all types. So, it's not just the 830G, which I know is something that you all are interested in and have had some developments in town. But we do all types of affordable housing. So, I don't know how much detail you want on each one. But what I did in this summary that Chris just passed out is gave you an overview of what each of the programs are. So, you can read this at your leisure, but maybe we can just go to the different, the different programs. How's that? Okay, so, the first one that, and I think we always put it first because it's my favorite. It's called, well, affordable housing is basically set up with income limits. That's the thing that is the same throughout all the different programs. They have income limits and they have rental or sale limits. So, that's what makes it affordable. There's various programs and it depends on how the development is funded. So, for the one, the first one, it's called the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And the reason, these are tax credits that are purchased by corporations. And the money gets distributed to each state by population. And in Connecticut, those funds are administered through the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. They're competitive. You have to apply for them. And then if you get awarded those, they go right to your project. So, you can use those in the development of this project. And it makes it, it's the thing that makes it affordable. The reason I like this program is because there's an incentive for upward mobility. So, you move in, we build a complex that has low income housing tax credit as the funding source. And everybody that moves in has to meet a certain income level. Okay? If they meet that income level, which we, that's where the details are. That's what we do. We check everybody's eligibility. If they meet the income level, they can move in. If five days later, they get a better job and they start making a lot more money, guess what? I don't really care. So, I've seen these programs where people have gone in and a nurse's aide is the household, you know, is the head of the household. And they're paying $500 a month in rent. And then this individual goes on and gets her education and now becomes an RN. Now, they're making over $90,000 a year in income. They're still gonna pay the low rent. What this has done is it has allowed people to move out of these units and go right to homeownership. It's the only program where I really see that happen. So, to compare this to what you may know of as Section 8, that's where the federal government subsidizes a portion of the rent. A large portion, seventy percent of the rent. The difference here is that once a person's income changes, their rent changes. I have seen situations where people have refused to take promotions, have quit second jobs, have done all kinds of things to hang on to those vouchers because they pay seventy percent of their rent. So, that keeps, to me, that keeps, I mean, it's absolutely necessary in certain circumstances. Like most of the projects where I have seniors or disabled people, there's not gonna be an opportunity really to get a higher income. You know, when you're seventy-five and you have, you know, ailments or whatever. So, it works perfectly there. But for younger people, I think that the other, you know, the other incentive program is better. But that's how Section 8 basically works. And there's two types. There's the Section 8 voucher program that is assigned to a particular building. That's called project-based Section 8. So, anybody that moves into that building will have their rent subsidized. A lot of the senior housing complexes are built that way. The other is where you have a portable voucher. So, if you're lucky enough, it's like hitting a lottery. If you're lucky enough to get one of these vouchers, you can take it anywhere in the United States, the Virgin, US Virgin Islands, Puerto Rico. It's anywhere you can take this voucher and it will pay seventy percent of the rent and you pay thirty percent. Now, I've seen...
Is there an upper limit?
Sure, there is. Because you can't go rent a place that the federal government sets what the fair market rent is. And if you have, let's say, your voucher allows you to have a two-bedroom unit, a two-bedroom in Willimantic, the voucher probably pays $700. Okay? You take that voucher and you go to Stanford, that same voucher is gonna pay $2,300. So, it depends on where you're located. And I am sure I only do Connecticut, but I am positive that if you go to other states where either the income levels are lower, the fair market rents are lower, your voucher's gonna be worth less. Okay? And if you go to Hawaii, I'm sure it's probably worth a lot more there. But that's how that one works. So, but that one, again, every year, people have to renew and recertify so that we know exactly what they, what their share of the rent will be.
And is a landlord required to accept?
Absolutely.
A formal question.
Absolutely. Yep. And banks are required to accept it in homeownership. Some of our housing authorities, our larger housing authorities, allow you to take a voucher. And I like this program where they say, if you, if you can work, if you can show that your income is increasing, we will allow you at some point in time, there's a formula for it, where you can take your voucher and actually use it towards a mortgage payment versus staying in rental. And I really like that. But in Connecticut, there's only two housing authorities that have that program because you have to be a very large housing authority. And we don't have that many. But that's a great property. Then, we can move on to the affordable. That's the one you guys are interested in, I think primarily, is the 830G. And you have, how many projects in Old Saybrook 830G?
I don't know off the top of my head, how many?
I think a half a dozen, I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Six or seven. Because I don't know if you all are aware of this, but 830G is used throughout the state. I see it used more effectively in some towns than others. I typically get hired to oversee the affordability component of the 830G developments. Right? So, in an 830G development, you'll have, let's say, if you're gonna build ten units, three of them will be set aside, right? To, to be affordable. And I usually get hired to assist the developer in that. But sometimes the developer does it themselves. So, then, in those situations, the towns sometimes hire me to make sure the developer is doing it correctly. And you did that in this town and it was very successful. I found generally that your developers were compliant. I have other towns where the developers built it, rented it or sold it, and then just left. They're defunct, they moved away. And now, these poor people can't sell their units, can't do anything. And the towns don't know how to administer it. So, they're on the phone calling everybody around and saying, who can do this for us? So, I've done that. And then, I've also been brought in to help towns where they have litigation with developers to, you know, figure out what they're doing. And you know, not, not all towns know how to administer it. So, but that's, you know, that's another, I think, good program. What we wanna know about, you wanna know more about that one?
Over there.
Okay. Then, we have what's called permanent supportive housing. And in recent years, what permanent supportive housing is, is a development where the funding source, so usually the federal government, the state government, or the low-income tax credit funder will say, "We will provide more incentives or rate you higher if you set aside a certain number of units that are considered permanent supportive housing." And those units come with services. So, in other words, those units are typically for people that either have mental health issues, they have certain disabilities, or they may be just coming out of homelessness. So, they get case management services. And usually, we try to put a few of those, or developers put a few of those in each of their developments so that they can score higher and get these government funds. They work well if they have good case management. Because as you can imagine, somebody with, you know, a background that, or was just, may have been homeless for a long period of time, or may have mental health or drug addiction or other needs would need the support to live, you know, independently. All right. Then, there, then there's, you know, there's other pro, I mean, there's one other program. I don't think you have any of it here.
I'm sorry, may I ask you to just repeat? You said that those are state-supported or state money?
Permanent supportive housing. Some are state and some are federal.
Okay, so they get money into the project or they own a house?
Well, no. For the, usually, the permanent supportive housing isn't ownership. It's rental and they provide extra services. I'll give you an example. There's a veterans' supportive housing, the BASH. It's called Veterans Administration Supportive Housing. In those cases where you have the VASH units, the Veterans Administration pays the rent, but on top of it pays support services so that the veteran that's living there, the veteran household, can get case management and social services. So, if the rent is $1,400, we, they, they might pay $1,700 a month. The other 300 is for the support services. And these keep, help keep people housed that would otherwise have some difficulty. Okay? So, that's typically how it works. There's one other program that we don't see that often. It's called, it's through the USDA Rural Development. And those are a little bit different. They sort of follow the HUD guidelines. HUD kind of has the overarching responsibility for all these programs, right? So, they have what I call the Bible. It's a, it's called the 4350. And it's a book about six inches, gets bigger every year, of all their regulations. And they change them all the time. So, that's basically the baseline. But then, every little project has a little nuance, right? And USDA Rural Development is the same. We have a couple of those. There's some in Clinton, there's some in Westbrook, and they're just a little bit different. Okay? There usually, I have one project that's in Woodbury. So, it's what's considered more rural than, than what we are. And those are basically the types of affordable housing that there is. In the package that I gave you, it showed what, I mean, it give you, you know, overview of all of these things. But I think the most interesting thing is what the income limits are and what the fair market rents are. So, a lot of times, I go speak to communities and they think that affordable housing is just for the, the very lowest income group that they can imagine. And that's not the case. So, if you look at the sheet that I gave you, you can see that, well, let me explain, let me back up, I'll explain one other thing. Usually, in these projects that are, depending on the funding source, when you determine the median income, you have two options. One is the state income, the median state income, or the municipality's state income. Some programs, 830G typically says, "You must use the lesser of." So, even if you're building in Old Saybrook, you'll see that the median income is almost $150,000 a year. It's 148.9. But the state income median is 122.3. So, when we're doing the calculations, we have to use the 122.3. However, there's another little caveat. It's also in Old Saybrook, you have IHC.
Yeah.
What the...
Incentive housing zone?
The incentive housing zone in Old Saybrook says just the opposite. We will let you use the Old Saybrook median income because by having a higher median income, you can rent to people that make more money and you can ask for more rent or your sales price can be higher. Okay? So, you have to know all of these things. And the devil in all of this is in the details. And that's basically what my company does. We do the administration of these for the developers or the municipalities or HOD, CHFA, Department of Housing. And it basically involves setting the rental rates or the sales price annually because of changes. So, if you sold something in 2018, you, you bought something in 2018 and now it's 2025, you wanna sell it, you gotta come back to us and we will recalculate what you can sell or rent it for. So, every year, that calculation has to be done. And the same calculation has to be done for the income of the people applying to live there. So, that's why we have to recertify annually.
If you own a house that you purchased under that program, can you rent it?
It depends. It depends on what the affordability plan that was approved by the town.
Okay.
If the town says it's only for sale, then you can only sell them. If they don't specify, you can also sell and rent. But your question is, or the answer to your question is, you're correct. You still have to apply all the restrictions.
So, it'd have to be these restricted rents?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. And they're usually deed restricted for forty years.
There's two more fine points that I don't wanna mess things up. But some of the affordable housing you've described, if it's land-based rather than voucher-based, has a sunset provision. That the IHC at Saybrook Station was restricted for twenty years.
Okay, you're right.
And then the cap comes off.
Right.
And the 8-30Gs were for forty years and then the cap comes off.
Right.
What the station was occupied in 2017. So, we're already eight years into twenty. So, a can gets kicked down the road a little bit.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I didn't see here is that some of these land-based affordable things are deed restricted.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, they don't count for the state purposes.
Correct. Absolutely.
The state purpose doesn't really matter because it doesn't...
That's right. And nobody...
There's nothing we can do about.
And then, and honestly, nobody monitors it. I mean, like I said, your town does, but a lot of towns don't. So, you know, it has to be deed restricted. But you are correct. But I will also say that I have seen caps as low as fifteen years. So, it depends on the municipality and it depends on what they agreed upon at the time those were built.
Right.
And what I'm finding in Fairfield County in particular is that a lot of people, well, not recently, but in the past years, we saw a lot of investors coming in from New York, buying these restricted properties and then just waiting it out until the restrictions came off. And then their rents went from like $700 to $1,500 overnight. And, you know, that's, that doesn't really sit well with me. But that happens. That happens. So, you know, I like to see, some of our projects have ninety-nine-year restrictions.
And so, the point is that we can write into regulations...
Absolutely what you want.
Whatever works best for all two.
Correct. Correct. And I've seen it all over the place. So...
Aside from 830G, which is...
Yeah, right. Exactly. Exactly.
And I think the thing too is, a lot of the towns have that ten percent goal to get out of, from 830G. But if you look at Saybrook Station, I mean, we're already halfway through. So, it's almost like, I'm saying, kick the can. It's, it's almost unobtainable unless you're building so many units so quickly to get that ten percent and then manage that with the existing housing stock in the community, you know, in trying to get that number, thirty percent. It's, it's hard, the ten percent. And I think that's why the town really hasn't used the ten percent as a goal because it's really an unachievable goal. And Saybrook Station, you know, is a perfect example. In ten years, those units will all just roll off and will need to buy, or build more affordable units to get to the ten percent.
Unless you can persuade the owners at that point in time that this is the right thing to do. And I've seen owners that have a different mission. Not-for-profit owners, which there are quite a few of them, that build these. Their mission isn't necessarily to, to make the biggest bottom line. And they will continue to go beyond the initial period and continue to keep them affordable. So, that's another, you know, option. I don't, you know...
I think it's tough, but...
It is.
It is to find those owners.
It is. It is. And mostly, they're in larger cities. So, like, we have a lot of them in Middletown, Bridgeport, Hartford, Stamford, New Haven. Some in Waterbury, in Britton. That's where, you know, the bigger town, the bigger cities. So, now, it's four to death. What else do you want to...
So, on the back of what Chris handed out, if that's the rent and you compared last year to this year?
Yes. And they've gone down. Which I had to have discussions with HUD and the major players in this area. There's a company that administers most of the HUD vouchers throughout the state. And they were saying how, when I first got this, when I first saw that the rents actually went down, I said, "Wait a minute. Aren't you guys out in the market?" I mean, all the rents of, everybody I talked to, the rents have gone, you know, sky high. But HUD, in their wisdom, in just about every town, reduced the rents. So, the fair market rents in twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five went down. And I can't believe, I just, and there's nothing I can do about it. They publish it, it's, there's no negotiation, there's no nothing. This is what they are, period. That's it. Which is, like I said, very strange to me. But, so, every year, they will come out with new numbers. Usually, some of the numbers are published early in the year, like January, and then others are published. Income limits, for example, won't be published until April. So, for 2025. So, for the first four months of the year, you're using twenty-four numbers. So, we'll see if those change at all. But they, they're pretty, they stay pretty close. So, I think that, that was it for me. And then, what we did in our, in our papers that we handed out was we provided a sample calculation. And it just includes a lot of different factors, right? It's pretty simple. This is in the statute. And you just have to plug it in and it changes annually. And some of the pushback that I get from developers is that the, all things being equal, the thing that makes the biggest difference is the interest rate, right? And they all call me and say, "Oh, no, I can get a better, I can get a mortgage cheaper than that." And they, you know, tell me I have to use theirs. That's not how it works. The state publishes a rate and that's the rate I use. Just like when they publish the rate that we have to pay on security deposits, the state tells me. It's not like I can make it up. Okay? So, that's when developers say, "No, no, I can get them a cheaper rate." Nah, it doesn't work that way.
I did have one, one question. So, you, so you, you work all around the state, you see all kinds of different things, your, your experience kind of with our, our local market here. You know, this is such a complex situation, such a challenging kind of riddle to solve. There's nothing obvious that we're missing. There's nothing that you look in your experience and say, "Well, Old Saybrook should really do this. We have a perfect situation for that."
No.
No, all right? It's just...
You, you don't have a lot of developed land. You have receptive and sewer issues a lot of places. So, no. Unless you start changing, changing your zoning where you're gonna allow high rises and, you know, change the whole design.
Nature.
Yeah. Yeah. No. There's really nothing. And I gotta say that Old Saybrook is one of the few towns where you really welcome this. And this is just anecdotal. It's not, I can't prove it out. But in my experience doing this for, you know, almost forty years, the wealthier the town, the more receptive they are to this. And you would think the opposite, that doesn't kind of make sense, right? You would think lower-income areas would be more receptive to having affordable housing. You know?
So, not to get ahead of things too much, but what we heard from CHFA is that with their limited resources, they embrace projects of thirty units and more. And if Old Saybrook were to express a desire for middle housing, developments of six to ten units per acre, then, not total, well, not density, but total, CHFA is not likely to be so interested in those because it's more resource-intensive from their perspective. So, what do you see from developers and CHFA types as being a possible growth of middle housing?
Yeah. I will tell you this, that they're absolutely correct. Because in my business, the magic number, I gotta make all these projects work, right? So, based on the restricted rents and income levels and all of that, the magic number for me is forty units. In a forty-unit complex, I can make it work. We'll cash flow, we'll have enough money to make the project viable for the entire restricted time. Not a problem. In projects, so they're saying thirty, I think that's probably doable. Projects that I've seen all over town and they're doing, they've said that because in years past, they have done six to twelve-unit developments. They're all failing. They're all failing and I'll tell you why. You cannot cover the costs over those few numbers. So, if you have...
They mentioned those, but they didn't tell us the whole story.
Okay. Let me tell you, I'll give you an example. I have a project that was an old parochial school. I won't mention the town. I have a project that was, uh, an old parochial school, I won't mention the town. The, um, church owned it, they wanted to, you know, they're good stewards, they wanted to develop it into affordable housing. Family affordable housing, so the units are large, three and four bedrooms, so there's not a lot of them. Well, uh, fast forward and it's failing. And there's only twelve units, and it's got an elevator, I can't spread the cost of the elevator, if you have. You know, twelve units or fifty units, same cost, insurance, basically the same cost. You know, taxes might differ a little bit, but the same, you have to go through the same steps, whether it's. Four units or forty, so that's why we tell you that.
Right, so from, from the zoning commissioner perspective, that's not zoning. So it's not zoning's fault, and so the, the talk at the state level is that zoning has to be fixed.
No, you can't.
It's not gonna change anything, if zoning were to do it the way they were.
I, and, and, you know, especially in towns like yours, where you're amenable to this, you want to do this, you want to have affordable housing. What can you do? You can't change the, the layout of the town.
And the project hasn't been set, that hasn't been filed to last. Otherwise, you built something and that.
And now, exactly, exactly, so that's what you're up against, so it's really hard, I don't know how you're gonna do it. But then I also see communities that are larger towns, that have a lot of land, that are. Do everything in their power to get out of it. And I don't know. I don't know why that is, I don't know if there's the fear of not understanding what affordable housing is. I've been to councils like yours and commissions like yours where they say, we don't want those people. Or we don't want our town to look like that town, wh- what are you talking about?
It doesn't have to, because.
Exactly.
You can make it so you can get affordable housing, that doesn't look like that.
That fits in your community, and like I said, in, in most of the places, I mean, we have housing, affordable housing in Westport. And Canaan, and in a lot of very affluent towns. And it fits right in with the community, and they're beautiful, and you wouldn't know any different, I mean, look at Ferry Road, you know where Ferry Road is? You know the, the low-income apartments there? You don't know, we manage those, you don't know the amount of times I get phone calls for people looking to buy a condo there. And it's affordable housing. And it's beautiful, and it's still beautiful.
It's what we take.
Right.
Now it's first occupied, what, twenty twelve?
That was, yeah, it's first one, or one of the first ones.
Yep, exactly.
And that's done by the same people that are doing the Wellington and Met.
Correct.
No, Hope, Hope did forty-five Ferry Road with the town.
I believe Hope's in Wellington.
Hope is a partner.
Oh, okay, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, the group that's doing the Wellington is.
They're instrumental in the creation, but it's op- operated by the Women's Institute from New.
No, no, no.
Not anymore?
No, we love it.
Oh, okay, that changed.
No, the Women's Institute was their development consultant. The Women's Institute is defunct, they're no longer around, we managed it.
Okay.
From the day it was, the doors opened, and I gotta tell you that that's a really successful project, that project. Has, um, had people, two or three households that have moved out to purchase homes. And we have fifty percent of the people that live there are the same people that. So, and the other people that have left is because they've either gone to a nursing home or passed away. So, if you maintain them and you build them right and they look nice and people don't move. Where are they gonna go?
Yeah.
Right, so if they wanna stay in town and they want their, to raise their kids in town, there's not a lot of choices, as you know. So, our apartments, they're, the highest one is renting a three-bedroom for eighteen hundred. Uh, one bedroom over at.
Saybrook Station?
Saybrook Station is twenty-five? And you get all the same amenities as you do, you know, regardless of where you live in town, so.
May I ask you to elaborate, when you said that HUD said that rents had gone down? I mean, were these national figures?
No, they do it by zip code.
Oh, so.
They do a study, yeah, they do an annual study. And they give us the numbers, I don't know who did the study. But I think that they need better glasses, because I'm not seeing rents going down.
Well, the other concern is, of course, the trend has been for the population in Connecticut to. Contracted or.
Decreased, correct.
And, um, so I, you know, I, I wonder if that's part of the trend.
I don't know, but like I said, we are, you know, we're mandated to use those numbers, I mean, different programs. Have different rent and, uh, sale number calculations. But generally, everybody looks at, hey, what did HUD say the fair market rent is?
Do you know if it went down universally or?
In just about every location except for a handful in Connecticut. But I will say, in some cases, I have a project in Plainfield, Connecticut, which is very low income. The, the market rent, we also do our own studies, so we'll call up, there's not a lot of rental options there. But, uh, we'll call up and we'll see, hey, what are these places renting for? And in that area, a one-bedroom is going for the, the seven, high seven hundreds, eight hundred a month. HUD is paying us a lot more than that for that project-based. Housing that we have, so anybody that moves into that housing, the rent that we collect is much higher than what the market is. And there's no, really no rhyme or reason to some of this stuff, it's just the way it works.
Do you think it could be impacted by accessory dwelling units? A little bit?
Yes, and I've seen some communities do that, especially in Fairfield County. Where, um, they, you know, they have larger homes, acreage, and, you know, they can do it, they're putting in. The units and they're, I think Waterford might be doing that too, they've now allowed.
So, so we opened it up, we've always allowed for attached, we opened it up for detached. So, and I'm just texting anybody, I'm looking at the numbers on my phone. But we have seventy-nine right now, sixty-nine attached, we've had twenty new since the zoning regulation went into effect in. Twenty twenty-one, and I wonder if that has some impact.
Well, the only way to find out is if, well, if it's rented, I mean, if they're rented, you could ask. What, what are the demographics of the renters? And then you could. No, you have to put deed restrictions on them to make them count, but you might. Look, I have towns where they have, um, trailer parks, okay, and they've been successful in saying that. Because the rents are so low for those, that those should count as affordable housing, and some do, and there's not really deed. There's deed restrictions, I think, but I'm not sure, and then I don't think the town's ever checked, to be honest with you. Cause I've seen one where. The, it was supposed to be restricted to people, uh, sixty-two and older. And then they pass away and now some, their grandson is, you know, their twenty-two-year-old grandson is living in the trailer. Like, I know this, but who checks? You know, I'm not managing that trailer facility, so.
Well, we don't manage that part of it, but I just had someone recently, it's someone who's lived in town, can't live on their own. The children are building an accessory dwelling unit, the other unit will go for sale or rent, so now you're creating a little bit of movement. And the plan is, if something happens to the, the older individual. That the ADU would be a place for their daughter to live. So, you know, it must have some kind of an impact, because you're freeing up a house, you're, you know what I mean, you're getting. You know, and that's what you're saying, there's a little bit of a difference, I mean, I, I don't know what these ADUs go for, I know some of them are very. You know, maybe for two thousand dollars, but it, it's showing some movement, I think the more you build, the more you're. Moving things around, that you're freeing up a house potentially that could have been. You know, move someone else in or, or so, so, I don't know.
The houses aren't renting for as much as they were. The housing rentals are going down.
Are they? And so that there is out what HUD is saying is that the whole rental market is going down.
And they're sitting on the market floor.
Really?
But I also do a lot with, uh. Yale interns in New Haven, and that's a big deal's market.
Yeah.
That's four thousand dollars for a two-bedroom.
That's why you see all the development in New Haven, yeah, and I, I will say that at the Wellington, we had. Some rules that were considered market where the rent was not fixed, you didn't have to have a certain income. We didn't care what you made or, you know, whatever, and we had a lot of nurses. Come from, yeah, and say, you know, a couple nurses wanted to share a two-bedroom or whatever, and even then the rents were reasonable.
Right.
For, you know, for that area, we tried to keep them low, so even the market rents at that project were like twenty-five hundred.
And I've noticed that Metrostar, they built the big complex in Rampford, and they have a bunch in New Haven, they tend to be more on the reasonable side. Than some of the bigger complexes.
It depends, you know, it depends on the motivation of the developer, like I said, I have a lot of, uh, not-for-profit developers, like Hope. That wants their mission-driven and not profit-driven. If you can get those kind of developers interested, but like I said, there's nothing you guys can do here. You know, you can't add another story to Old Saybrook, you know, you'd like to duplicate it, but you can't.
We'll take over Westbrook, we'll just take over the land.
Can you talk just a little bit about your experience with. Deed-restricted units for sale, I, I think we've always had this focus, everything here for the most part, other than. Just everything's apartment, apartment, apartment. Um, we have a development that may have some, a combination of rentals and places that you can purchase, which I think. Is great, but we've always had this focus here, because the majority of our developments and our units are rentals.
So, they're, they basically operate the same in that whoever is gonna administer the affordability. Component of that development, you have to follow the same rules, right? What happens is that. I'm not offending any realtors, by the way, but the realtors don't understand this program. And I'm also finding out that a lot of attorneys don't understand this program, so what we're seeing is people will go in, so, um. Where's the one that's half in Westbrook?
Ethan's Land.
Ethan's Land, okay, so I'll give you that example, um, those, there's just eight units, I think. Yeah, four and four, four in West, four in Old Saybrook, and.
On the Westbrook line?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two in Old Two.
Okay, well, there is, yeah, maybe.
And five.
Wasn't it eight units total?
I think it's eight, I thought it was.
Six, yeah, six.
But the restricted ones, I'm not talking about, I'm, I'm talking about, it's, the whole complex is eight. Or else they were four in Westbrook, and then each had its own couple. And when it went, first went for sale, the. Set aside units, the units that had to meet the affordability complex, were a hundred thousand dollars less and looked identical. To the other units, which is what you want, right? You wanna make them all look the same, basically. So, great, the people that were lucky enough bought those, and then time passes and now they want to sell them. So the first thing they do is they say, well, I wanna get, you know, what's the, what's the asking price? They'll go to a realtor and they'll say, hey, these are selling for five hundred thousand dollars now, and that's what they think that they're gonna be able to do, and then lo and behold, somebody. Usually me, because if I'm involved with the project, I say, wait a minute, you can't do that, you have to come to me. So then I do the calculation and I say, well, you bought it for a hundred and fifty, you can sell it now for a hundred and eighty. But my neighbor sold his for five, sorry, this is how the program works, and then who you sell it to. Has to meet the requirements, the same requirement. So I had a situation, I was telling you about that before, where I had a young man, um, buy an affordable unit over in Rotten near. The base and, um, immediately put thirty thousand dollars into the house, bought the house, it was affordable. Did an elaborate yard, upgraded, finished the lower level, beautiful, three months later. He was deployed to another state. And tried to sell the house, came to me and said, well, I put thirty grand into it. And I said, sorry, you, you can't, you, you've been here three months, you're not getting one, any of that thirty thousand, you are not getting one thing. They fought me, they took it all the way up to the state, got attorneys and everything, they swore that they. Were never told about the restrictions, it's in your deed, you know, the attorney should have told you. Um, it, it was settled out, you know, it was not a problem, but I learned from that experience, so when we administer these programs. And I verify people and I say, okay, you, you're qualified to buy this. Condo, this home or whatever, and I say, please sign this document, the document says, I understand the restrictions. I've got, I know the statute, I know that I will have to comply with the regulations. Because I'm not going through that again, and I was shocked, because with the, the case with the serviceman, I said, you're. That your lawyer didn't tell you no, he didn't tell us, he didn't really understand the statute. So, that's, that's very, very confusing, so I always tell everybody, get somebody that understands it. I mean, you're lucky, cause in town, you have, you know, me, I, I know this, and Chris can always call me, but, um, who's the attorney we use? That knows this in and out.
Ed Casella?
Ed Casella, thank you, so Ed Casella is really good with this stuff too, and he's done a lot of the affordability plans. But I don't find that many attorneys around that know it in and out like that, you know, it's not an everyday thing.
That's part of the problem, and that's why agents don't understand it, is because you don't come across it.
Yeah, exactly, it's not an everyday.
No.
So is that ca- calculation of what percentage or what the amount that they can. Accrue, is that a set formula, is that something that you could share us?
I did, it's in your package.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's the. We do one for maximum rental, but it's the same formula for sales, and it gives you just a, a sample of what all the components are.
Or to purchase, to, as you say, to purchase, if you were to resell it.
Right, there's a calculate, it's, it follows the big similar outline. Alright, so you would have to use the state, the first step is to determine if you're gonna use the state. Meaning income or the municipality meaning income.
I think all is my way of setting the price of the house.
Yeah, setting the price.
There is a calculation and it's updated every time you go to sell it, so if, um. I get new figures usually at the beginning of the year, right, so I get new numbers. But I, at the time of the sale. I have to go back and redo these, cause I have to find out what the taxes are, so if the taxes have changed, that goes into the formula. If the interest rates. It's a, yeah, it's a lot of work, because you have to get the.
Just the percentage or year.
No, 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 no.
I know the one that I was working on at Redwood Commons. It, the price changed because the interest rates went up. So the price came down.
Yeah, exactly.
So you could actually be in a situation, and you check me on like what I'm gonna say, that you actually are selling it for less than you bought it for.
Correct.
That doesn't sound like a deal.
No, I know.
But it's a deal when you go to buy it, that's all you can.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, in the case of the one at Redwood Commons, that was a poor closure.
Um, none, I know, I did the calculations. I mean, like I said, I'm basically the only person that was, you know, my company's like one of the, maybe two that do this.
I only have two, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so. But it's in there, but if you, you know, you ever have any questions, get to Chris and we can do a calculation for you.
No, I know, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Can you make your house affordable?
It, it's just, it's complicated and, you know, you don't get an A thirty G for a year or so, then all of a sudden, you're like, what's the median?
Yeah.
And, and I think the one thing I learned out of the audit, with the affordability documents, that I didn't realize is depending on how it was written, if it could be. The state median or the area median, which, you know, and this situation here, you've got a bunch. Twenty-three thousand dollar difference, so now, you know, the next time we see one that goes through where we have that option.
Right.
You know, we really kinda need to pay attention to it, and I mean, I understand the developer too has to make their numbers work. But I didn't know there was an option, it was just. But I didn't know there was an option, it was just kind of okay, you go through the formula, the attorneys review it, they write up the the documents, so it's definitely.
Yep, and it has an impact on either the rental amount or the sale amount, so you really have to pay close attention to that. And you have them here in Old Saybrook, you have one of each, you know, or a couple of each, so.
We learned.
Yeah, and now there's a new uh program that I have yet to. Manage, and it's the housing that they developed, it's called workforce housing, that has a whole nother set of. Requirements and there's a couple towns that are doing that, Hartford has really. A couple of developers in Hartford have done this where they, the restrictions are less cumbersome. But they get some tax incentives from the municipality to set aside. Some what's called workforce housing, but they don't have to go as low as you do in some of these others, where you have to go down to either thirty percent, twenty percent of AMI. Those are all at the eighty percent level, eighty percent is pretty high, so if you figure the rent, I mean, the median income in Old Saybrook is one forty eight nine. Eighty percent of that is still pretty high.
Right.
So if you have the eighty percent restriction, it's not that bad. Developers can work with that, it's when you have the really low set of sides that makes it difficult.
Yeah, the interesting thing too is one of the actions when the Affordable Housing Plan or Affordable Housing Plan was adopted. Was to modify the regulations to have detached ADUs with income restrictions. And I mean, there's no way we could ever manage. You know, trying to figure out, I mean, a homeowner to go through with the the number of accessory dwelling units we have, I think it would be a full time job. And to do that, and a lot of the the great ideas we've had and people have over the years, it's sometimes, it's just so complicated. You know, it makes sense when you say it, but when you actually go to apply it. You know, imagine, I mean, we go through with the units that we have, just trying to. Every five years, is it owner occupied, we do a renewal, trying to see if it's still there just to account for it, never mind having to say, okay, how much is your rent? Are you following the deed restriction, it's, you know, is it. Worth it, you know, is it better to have more units and hope that you get some naturally kind of occurring affordable because people aren't gouging the rent? And I don't know.
It's always very cumbersome, I can't imagine you trying to administer. For, what did you say, at eighty? And then you're, it's invasive, I mean, really, because. At least people know that if they move into like a ferry crossing, right? They know that every year you've got to provide me your income, your tax return, your bank statements. They know that that's a part of the program, that's why they get to pay a lower rent, and they abide by it, but how do you do that in eighty individually owned? Who's going to monitor that, you know, I mean.
When they sell. How do you, you know, how do you, you know, it's hard enough to go through the the apartment buildings and the condominiums that have those restrictions, trying to. Explain, you know, to every buyer coming in, oh, where it's an ADU, but it's permitted. With this restriction, I mean, it's it's a full time job, and and like you were saying, I think. To put that burden for just one unit, it's so much work.
But I don't think you'd get that many requests to build them that.
That, that's. I I agree.
That's exactly right, because I wouldn't do it.
I wouldn't either, plus it's an encumbrance on the property and the next person may want to rent it to their grandmother and they can't because you have to advertise. You know, beyond the community.
That's one.
Oh, it is? I didn't know that.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of changes coming down the line. So that's one of them, we no longer have to affirmatively market. That was a very recent. Administration change.
Well.
And. In a way, I'm not that upset about it because it was just an additional step that really didn't. Garner a lot of results, and what that meant was that I would have to do an extra step that cost. The developers money and cost us a lot of time, which is where I'd have to look at a census tract. And see who lives in that census tract, so you build. A complex in an area, I'd have to find out exactly the census tract that you built it in, then I'd have to find out who lives there. Through the census tract and the US Department of whatever, the Census Bureau, and then if we found out that. Most of the people that live there were of one group or another, I would have to market to the groups that weren't there. So if it was all Caucasians, I'd have to, you know, market to non whites. If it was all Hispanic, I'd have to go to outside of that community, and it just made no sense. In a lot of cases, I mean, I understand opening it up and not discriminating and saying anybody that wants to live in our community is welcome, I love that idea. You know, make diversity is fabulous, but. To add that additional step, because what I have found is that people want to live where they're comfortable, where they can go to their churches and go to their grocery stores and live near. Their relatives and do the things that make them feel like they're in community, right? So to outreach, it, you really weren't pulling people in, so when people say, well, we're afraid we'll get people from like. I I often hear, well, we don't want people coming in from New Britain. And I'm like, wow, you know, I I just don't get that kind of mentality, right? They're not going to come anyway, they don't want to live in your town, it's like, what do you think, just because we advertise, they're all going to rush in, they're not going to rush in, so don't worry about it.
Well, there were people in town that thought that would save the junction.
Oh, God. And I've never seen it happen, and I have seen, I've seen the towns that struggle to keep. To to keep low income housing because they need the services, they need the teachers, they need the teachers aides, they need people for the fire department. You know, um. Let's see, town Norfolk, very low key, but very, very wealthy town, right? They struggled, and they were one of the few towns that I worked in, they developed small eight unit development. And when they didn't have enough money, that they didn't get enough money from the municipalities, at a town meeting. They stood up and said, okay, how much can each of you contribute, and I was shocked. That they wanted the housing so bad that various people in town just said, okay, you can count on me for, you know, five hundred thousand, I mean, I was like. Okay, I'm I'm not seeing that, but I've also, in Westport, I've seen people donate mansions. Mansions, because kids didn't want it, you know, they can't afford to operate them, and so they give it to a not for profit. The not for profit changes it into affordable housing, and you know, so, yeah. It's amazing. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if there's people in uh, since the area where Catherine, Catherine's. Yeah, maybe there's some places in Fenway. Any other questions?
Oh, that was very interesting. Thank you.
You sure? Okay, alright.
Thank you, Maria, I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Educational.
Yeah, anytime.
I'll talk to you soon.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
And our next guest speaker is going to talk to us about the Housing Task Force status report, Christina Tost.
Can hear it, right, so. The purpose is, this agenda item is really kind of a check in. So we've had a lot of speakers, we've had a lot of meetings, we've had a lot of discussion. But circling back to the Housing Task Force where, which was established in August, we do have a deadline. Um, for some time in the spring to report to the Board of Selectmen of progress. So I didn't have a chance to finish it, but we have done quite a bit, even though it doesn't, it seems like we've been doing a lot of education. So um, since we started, um, we've had meetings, pretty much, at first we said it would be the first few months. Uh, we've been having meetings almost twice a month on some type of an educational um matter, speakers, folks like Maria Chaffa and so forth. Um, never mind the educational. Materials that have been spread through between. Things that I've given you, things we found for each other, um, we did um create a housing resource section. On the website, I do want to tell you some things did not go on there because they're copyrighted. So you may not see everything that may have been forwarded or emailed or printed out because of that. Um, and we've also saved a number of these presentations to the Land Use Education. Website, and there's just a little link on there, it says Housing Education, I have a few more I need Larry to upload. Um, but out of this, we we've talked about a number of different things, we've kind of gone all over the place, I think we've all had. Some interesting and great ideas. So where I think we are is it is, we have a lot of actions ongoing, even though we've been spending a lot of time. On education, so I just kind of wanted to go through. What we've discussed and what you've tasked me with, and I do have some additional paperwork for you, um. So the one thing that I do have for you, at one point, you had asked for a comparison. Um, between eight thirty G. And the incentive housing zone, so between density qualifications, regulations. I can just kind of pass these around, I didn't want to bombard you with your packet um of materials. Uh, so. Um, that's one thing I did get completed for you, um, one of our discussions was to promote the accessory dwelling units. Um, so from that meeting, which we still have quite a bit to do, we talked about educational articles for Saybrook events, educational flyers for ADUs. Um, and working with Rivercog to disc- discuss regional ways to promote the ADU, I did meet with Megan. Um, for Rivercog, we did start that discussion, I don't know if we necessarily need to go a regional approach. Um, and and I think Megan kind of came to that, we came to that conclusion, um, so at some point. Unless someone wants to write some articles or some public outreach, that's on the to do list for me. Housing outreach to the public, that was brought up during one of the meetings, when are we going to talk to. The residents of town in the community, and with that, those tasks were to. Um, review the survey questions and results from the Affordable Housing Plan, which I did distribute tonight. And then Sarah McAlwicky, who was your clerk, is still working for us part time. She went through and we discussed the survey and she's been helping me with some questions, so one of the things that you asked for. Was to have a survey and. One of my thoughts was, well, we took the survey last time and it says, do you know the income limits in your community? Or how, you know, what the average income is, and you just hit the answer wrong, so the thought was to have a survey where it would have a little bit of a fact. Even if you answered the correction, or the question right. So we're looking at a platform that you would answer the question, and then it would give you a little housing fact that maybe someone who took the survey other than saying, my income level is this, I live here, I own, I rent. And go through, that may have a little bit of an educational component. So, some homework. Here's some draft questions that um we came up with, and the thought was. Maybe to have the survey a little bit different than the last one or some of the typical ones, and Megan will email this to you and Mike and everyone who's not there. Um, and we don't need to go through this now, but maybe for our next meeting. Is, you know, some of the things I think through our meetings, one of the things was, um, and. We talked to social services, how many people taking this survey have Husky Snap rental assistance or heating, try to learn a little bit about the people who are actually taking this survey. Versus their age, um, you know, which, which do you think would be the best option for a home, so this was a little bit different than a normal survey, and the thought was. If we could do this whole interactive component, that people may learn something new that they may not. Um. So if you could take a look at that and then we can discuss this.
It also might make them more engaged and willing to complete it.
Yes, that's what I. Um, so the other part of that too is we discussed. I got quite a list here, so this, um, we discussed for. That educational meeting, so right now you have a draft, we need to finalize it. Uh, we need to kind of come up with a deadline, we could talk about this at the next meeting. Obviously, post it to the website, publicize it, um, our last survey that we did for. It may have been the Housing Plan or National Hazard Mitigation, we had QR codes, we've been all over town. For the uh last housing survey, we went to soup kitchens, we went to hotels, we went to places, so we plan on doing something similar. Um, we did offer the survey last time in English and Spanish, you did not get one. Response to the Spanish survey, so I think we need to think about if we want to have it translated to another language, Spanish or some other, just kind of throwing that out there. Um. The other thing was, we decided we were going to have a. Public outreach meeting where you wanted a PowerPoint prepared, and if. If I'm not supposed to be following through on all of this, this is what's going on behind the scenes, behind your education, um, this was a kind of a hybrid. Um, charrette where we would have different photographs of, you know. If you would like to see new housing, would you like it to look like this or this, or this is what we allow, do you think we should allow more of this or this? So in addition to having that as a PowerPoint presentation, we thought it might be interesting to add that into the survey. So you can look at some of those housing types, even though it may be repetitive. Um, I'm finding, and and I know Megan has been doing a lot of work with Rivercog and Thrive and public outreach, I think people are getting a little burnt out. Um, and they're taking, I think more people are responding to the surveys than spending another evening out. That's just my thoughts, and Megan's muted, but she's.
Hundred percent accurate.
So I I think there's a little bit of meeting fatigue going on, and we have a lot going on, so um, that's something that is in progress. Um, and we also need to figure out where we're going to do this, speaking topics, who's going to be speaking, so. The first steps, I think, maybe just to kind of go through the survey, if the question, the questions, we can talk about them. Uh, maybe put some comments together, we could talk about your changes at the next meeting or new questions. Um, and you can see the results from the previous survey, some of the things in the previous survey, I don't think much is going to change, maybe there'll be a big surprise. Um, so that's what we're thinking, try to do something a little bit. Different.
So Chris, you. Listening to you, I mean, there's a lot going on.
There's more.
A lot on your plate, it's more, so is the public meeting, the charrette type, you know. It sounds like we could just supersede that with the survey, I mean.
And that's really.
Just to kind of manage workload and, you know, and I don't want to jump ahead, but I read all the responses in the survey, and I think, you know, when you do a charrette like that, you can have fifty fifty. Some people want this and some people want that, and I think if you get just as much information, probably a more controlled manner. With a survey, so that's the way I would leaning is not do the.
I can also add that Rivercog just received a um technical assistance grant from DOH to do some public engagement modules, and there's going to be. A visual preference part of that, so that might be something that we can put together, um, that can be used later as well.
Okay. So I guess I need to know where the commission is going because we're gathering pictures and trying to, I mean, we could use it for the survey as well, I I mean, maybe.
I would lean more towards just the survey rather than a public meeting, because I think we are getting burnt out on public meetings. Didn't you have one Monday night?
Last Monday was for sure.
And how was that attended?
I would say.
Poorly.
Yeah. There was a number of people online too, so that's the one thing that we did.
Yeah, we're going to do a public meeting, we have to be public, you know.
Well, I I mean, what we could do is if you don't want to go through the the whole charrette, is maybe we could just. Have a meeting following the survey, pick a date and invite people who want to come in. To a meeting like this, a regular meeting, and if, see who comes in, I mean, you know, I mean typically. And Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we see a lot of the same folks coming out to these meetings and they're typically. Coming out to these meetings and they're typically boarding commission members. And people there to support other boards and commissions or, or some type of a stakeholder. So I mean, we could just maybe in the survey say if you have any questions or you want to come talk about this, invite them to a meeting like this and not go through. The whole presentation. That's really. Your call. I'm fine with it either way.
I love that idea.
You don't want another night meeting, Megan?
So tired.
I think it's to be too much if you have too many.
And, and I think I know right now, um, thrive. Um, I believe I emailed everybody the most recent. You know, we old Sabre Quins are putting up flyers in the train station up and down Main Street train that help. Promote Thrive, which we're part of. And there's just so many things going on. The SS four is going on with the region, which we're involved in. What the US bike group.
I can tell you, we checked in on the survey responses so far for the TOD Thrive Plan. And out of all four communities, we've only had about fifty responses. It's not ideal. It's open till the twelve. If anyone in, in this group hasn't done it, please, please, please do.
And I think the thing too, how long is your survey effort? It's a month and a half?
This, it's uh launched on February twenty-sixth and it's open until the twelfth.
Cause I'm thinking maybe we should try a longer duration. For the survey.
The only thing I would say with the longer duration is you're going to have to send out some sort of reminder. That's available.
Well, even with the short. Duration, we're doing the same. We're having the same thing. It's um.
Oh, sorry, Chris.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say we have three rounds of social media, paid ads, three rounds of regular ads, three rounds of flyers going out. Um. It's a lot.
That's a lot, yeah.
Okay. And for fifty responses.
Is it appropriate to offer gift cards to?
We paid people fifty dollars to come to the last one and nobody came.
There, there was more regional staff. The one that was at the pavilion, they had gift cards, refreshments. I mean, it was really well put together. It was kind of myself, a few other planners, the River Cog team. Some folks from Middletown. It was. Yeah, not marrying. Paula went to that one before her Wetlands meeting. I, I mean, it wa- it was, there were three people or four people, I think, that attended from Old Sabre. And, and one of the comments was, do we think you can get a golf cart path from my house to the library? That was kind of an interesting one. So anyway, so I mean, we can just do, we can add into the survey. You know, this meeting and then just instead of the PowerPoint, just plug. Have a little bit more of a robust survey, if that makes.
Visuals in the survey, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I will.
If that, we can put a question in there about, do you want to have a public hearing about housing? Be one of the questions.
Would you attend?
We can't get them to attend when we're giving them a gift card. I don't know.
People always say yes and then. Too cold and rainy, I'm not going.
Okay, so I'll work on that and then um we can talk more details about the survey. We won't do the charrette. Um, the other thing that is going on that's related to this commission. Um, and I think everybody did have interest. We had the MRDA. Outreach Myrtle. Um, and that was, I forget when. Uh, but the resolution is drafted in the Board of Selectmen, um, is going to put it up for adoption on March eleventh. So that was the program that um had to do with potential support. If our regulations we created in area, this is a very vague. Um. Description within a half a mile of the train station near a downtown. And if we had certain regulations that met the criteria, we can get help. From Myrtle, MRDA. Sorry, I keep saying Myrtle. I'm not supposed to say that. So that resolution will get adopted following that. We need to go through our regulations, set qualifications and so forth. Um, and I mean. I've been kind of doing a lot of the background work. I could bring it to the commission so we could go through all of it. I, I don't know how you. I mean, how hands-on you want to be with some of this stuff. Um, or that's really.
I don't want to slow things down.
Okay.
I think that's a key.
Well, just to refresh my memory. What does that lock us into as a town? The, this um. This MRDA.
So it's the Municipal Redevelopment. Authority and it's a program where it would make us a little bit more eligible. It's not locking us in. We would opt in. And it would make us a little bit more eligible if we have certain zoning regulations in place, which we do have some already. I think um that it may make us a little bit more eligible for funding as well as potentially. Um, property owners in that zone. And that's really kind of a very bare bones basis. So there was that.
I'll, I'll look it up.
Remember we had a meeting on it?
Yes, I, I.
So you could.
I, I'm, I.
There's been a lot of meetings.
I just don't recall the details. Um, surprised that we're already advancing a uh a resolution to pursue it. So that's.
Well, we can advance with the resolution to opt in. It doesn't necessarily mean we'll be accepted. But I, I think we do have some qualifying points. So yeah, we had that. That meeting was on January fifteenth. If you want to revisit the video.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I will. Thank you.
Okay, um, so we have that. Um, one of the. We talked a little bit about some of the actions here. I think when we review this. I don't think we're in a position. Right now. To start looking for tax deductions for regularly. I, I think we're just. There, there's a lot here and a lot of it, even with the accessory dwelling units to put an affordable component. Some of the things don't make sense and part of your charge is not just for. The Affordable Housing. Uh, tasklist, but it's also just to promote housing and alternatives in general. That's why it's a housing task force, not affordable. Uh, so the one thing is Megan and I, we did discuss at one point. Uh, we met to talk about Megan and her role from the region. Uh, we talked about. Accessory dwelling units. We came up with some ideas. We talked about promoting accessory dwelling units. And flyers and different things. And the next thing you know, it kind of evolved. Once we sat down in the office and met into something different and. We met, what was it, a week or two weeks ago with uh Ben Lovejoy from the Department of Housing. Um, and talked about. You know, some of the things that we had going on and. We had to do it a little quickly, so it really didn't come through here as we wrote, put together a letter. Um, saying that the town would like, and I sent it to you, some support. From DOH on looking at why accessory apartments in the B one mixed-use apartments, it used to be mixed-use accessory apartments. Um, when this regulation um or this document was prepared. To try to see if we can learn a little bit about why people aren't taking advantage of it. I suspect some of it is septic. Parking, so maybe a little bit of analysis about that. So DOH, if they entertain our. Our request, we can get up to fifty thousand dollars. Um, in funding to do some studies um in the Main Street train station area. Um, B one and that would. Maybe that'll give us some answers and maybe that'll give us some information also to identify properties where this could work. Um. For apartments. So it's not exactly what's in here, but it kind of piggybacks on something we have in place. I know the zoning commission. Um. Relax the regulations and change things to promote more uses. Or more, more people using this regulation. So this may be a good way to find out what some of those stumbling blocks are. Maybe our regulation's too strict. Maybe it's just. The soils aren't there or people have nowhere to park their two cars. Who knows? So that's one thing. If that goes through, that would be another. Um. Project there and then uh in the spring, we're tasked with reporting to the Board of Selectmen. We have a little bit of flexibility. It's not like a. Just what we've been up to. And I mean, I think. We have a lot going on. It was, so we're chugging along with a number of different things. It's not as though it's been all education, but there's really a lot. To housing, you know, and initially I think we said, you know, two to three months, meaning twice a month. I mean, here we are. We started in September and now we're in March. And I think we're all learning something, including myself. Every time we have a new speaker, there's always something new to learn. As we go. So we have that and then um our other task was to begin the Affordable Housing Plan. Update. So I did talk to our consultant and they're slated to have the kickoff meeting, the second meeting in. Um. September. So you know, the one thing. That we have there, I find it's difficult is, you know, you have this plan like the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. And there's these requirements. They have to be adopted every five years. So by the time you go through the process. You get the document together. And this one, I think it's next summer would be the expiration. I, I, we're not going to go to housing jail. I think if we're a little late, but we might as well just. Now that we've got all this information, start getting this together, getting it in place. It's on our minds. But it, it's almost impossible. Hazard mitigation, just to kind of jumping around, which is another five-year plan. Uh, we still have not heard back from FEMA that they've approved it. And that was from October. And you know, you think about it, it's. You know, I understand there's a lot going on. But we'll get it approved and in five years, we're going to start all over again with these tasks. I wish. And, and I mentioned it, I wish they would just change the law so that maybe it's ten years and we have a little bit more of a robust plan and a little more time. Versus to do something versus planning for the next. Plan. So. Um, that's my update. It was a lot unless I missed something that we're working on or you've asked me to work on. Um, I, I think. We've got, we're making progress. Um, definitely take a look at the questions, book comments. I don't know. Do you want to put comments together before the meeting and send them? Like maybe you could send them to Karen and. Karen can merge them all together or send them to me in coffee, Karen. Um, and we can have a discussion, you know, at our next meeting. I'll put it on the agenda with anything else you might want to. Discuss. And I think that's my affordable or my housing plan. Update.
Yeah, just to, um, I guess add on, you mentioned that we've had a lot of speakers here. There's a lot of material to integrate, but you know, maybe we could back off the speakers a little bit and. You know, work on this and. And then when we get like more of a deliverable or I don't know, a product or something, then we. Maybe bring someone in to look at it or I don't know.
Well, part of this, when we initially started this and we kind of went through our scope. It was for a little while, we were going to have speakers, but then as we went through this, it was, oh. Well, we haven't heard from the building officials. So there's been a lot of suggestions too. From this commission or the MRDA, which is a new program kind of getting on board on that so that. I think, I mean, if you're ready, we can kind of pause a little bit on this education, but if we need. Someone to come in, there's a lot of material on the web. Um, and I know I've been getting a lot of emails and I mean, you could subscribe. To fifty different websites that are going to send you two housing emails every day. I mean, we also met with D-Sager Get Connecticut. They have their bill going through. If that goes in, they're going to have another program. I, I don't know. I think it can be a little overwhelming. Um.
All the speakers have been good, but I'd be in favor of I guess tapping the brakes a little bit.
I tend to force more actionable, you know, survey questions. Then we might get to where we have something we need a speaker for. To get, go deeper. Or right now, I think we have a lot.
Yep. So right now for your next agenda, I'm not. Oh wait, let me not. You might have a referral. Um. So your next meeting, which is the nineteenth, you do have with your planning hats on. You do have a referral for. Um, a. Eight thirty G application that's going to the zoning commission. Obviously Bob's going to have to say. He's not on the, he's on the zoning commission, not housing task force. And we can go through the questions. Um.
Where, may I ask where that eight, eight thirty G is?
It's on Middlesex Turnpike. It's where Beach Appliances is next to Oceanside Auto. So that's a twelve-unit uh development. I, I've gone through it a little bit with the developer. I haven't really had a chance to dig in to those materials. Uh, at some point, they've gone through the Wetlands Commission. Um, you will have a subdivision. It hasn't been submitted. Uh, Max's place for their development has started preliminary. Um, reviews with Architectural Review Board. So I think with your planning hats on, you're also going to have quite a few things going on. I just don't know when they're going to land and a lot of time the advocate's like, oh yeah, I'll be here next month. And then something happens. So. Um. We'll work on the questions. I can work. I, I mean, I guess at the next meeting, if we really kind of dig into those questions. We can get the survey up. We can show you a draft with the photographs and go from there.
I think that's better.
So it's good.
And then maybe we'll get a grant from DOH and. We'll have another.
I have high hopes.
Good. So where, where are we going to be building these small starter homes?
Well, I think, and, and I'm just kind of, this is why we're having this conversation. I think it's very easy to jump into what we're building and what we're changing for regulations. I think we need the public outreach and support response first. That's just my. Two cents. I mean, and that's what I heard from you. If you want to do something different, this is your.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
Your committee, your task force. I mean, there's a lot of ideas and every time you read a different. Article or have a different speaker, oh, we can run with that or we could do this or we could do that. And then it's.
It's very easy to chase the next nominee after.
So the thought is, do we stick to this for now? Not add to it unless. We get grant money or some other type of a project, I'll plug away. Um, and then we'll kind of take a little bit of a break, but I'll work in the background to. To get things going.
I think that's better.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Anything else anybody to add? I've been looking for more to do. I just, and I don't mind doing any of that. I just. I, I, I have this listed and it's, oh, I have to do this. I have to do that. And then I'm like, wait a minute, like. Do you guys realize how much we got really going on in the background?
I think we would spend a lot because we don't do work. We don't see it anymore.
So are you sending this out electronically or can you?
We can send that electronically.
Okay, yeah, we can like edit it or that'd be good.
Yeah.
Track changes or something.
I kind of, I was working on it with Sarah, but I also thought giving you both at once. We just focused the whole discussion. Tonight on the questions, so that'll give us something to. Think about, little homework for our next meeting.
So is the format going to be exactly like this or is it going to be more like that original? One going back a few years.
No.
Said to prioritize them.
No, the format will be more like that, but it's going to have pictures. It's going to be different. It's going to have, what kind of housing would you like? To see? You'll have four pictures and you can pick the four pictures. If you were to have duplexes in your community. Would you want them to be more of a townhouse style or a two-family or an accessory dwelling? So. It, it's going to be a little bit more. Interactive and visual and then it'll give you some. Facts to your responses. So you know, you answer a question right or wrong and it'd say, hey, did you know that? We have ninety accessory apartments in town and we permitted twenty and. we have ninety accessory apartments in town and we permitted twenty and people don't even know some of these things, so that, that's the thought. So if these base questions work, we can start plugging the pictures in and then go through that.
Sounds good.
Chris, I just want to add too, with my RiverCog hat on, that part of our DOHTA grant is to fund RiverCog Extension of Staff Services for towns for public engagement efforts. So if you need extra hands, we will have funding to help you with stuff.
Thank you. And the one thing I did fail to mention with our DOH effort is that RiverCog will help us with some of our public relations and outreach through that. And Megan came up with a great idea for a map.
Yes, which I will get to.
You know, I know, it's, I don't think, no one knows about it, so she had a great mapping idea to kind of visualize, visualize the town and uses. So. It's kind of dangerous when we get together because we come up with more ideas and make more projects and we're like, yeah, we could do this, yes, we could do that.
Get very excited and give ourselves extra work.
We're good at that.
So we're going to postpone the zoning districts and map.
Do you think that would be, I mean, I know it's kind of, we never get to it or we haven't gotten to it. Would it make sense to go back and review the zoning regulations in the map and maybe more of a question and answer for everyone or go through the districts? I, I'm just throwing it out there. I, I think for me to go through every district, which is fine. You know, we'll go through the map, we'll go through every residence district. I did make you in the beginning, a whole table about all the different zones, all the different housing, all the different uses.
That's useful.
But I kind of have heard back that there's a little bit of disconnect or a need for a review. So I guess I'll leave it up, up to you, would it make sense to do some homework and review and have a Q and A? Or, and, and I mean, that could evolve into a whole, this is what we allow in this zone, that's what we allow, but I think I don't know, our last meeting with the map.
I mean, the Q and A would be great, but everyone has to review the information and come with questions.
But I guess that's.
Some, some broad overview would be good.
Okay.
You know, maybe it doesn't have to be detailed every zone, but you know, like a broad overview and then we drill in where needed or you know, why, yeah, why old Seabrooks laid out like it is, I mean, there's a lot of tribal knowledge, I know. We don't need to review all of it, but it's kind of evolved and, you know, where do you see it evolving or?
Yeah, well.
What are the options, the levers?
Differences that maybe historically have popped up that separate now the A1 from A2 to A3 or B2 from B4.
Like less, less work.
So I, I guess something kind of going on with.
The new ones is.
Well, I, I think it would really be from that comparison chart, the comparison of the uses as far as residential, and we can talk about all the uses, which I don't think is a bad idea after our most recent map change with the B2 and the B4. But the thing is, would it, I mean, would the commission have time between this meeting and the next or two meetings, just to kind of go back and read the preambles of the zoning districts, you know, all of them, you know, to figure out, so for example, B3 allows for residential. Anything that's a business district could become affordable housing. So I, I think it's important not just to focus on the different residential zones. But, but you know, it's up to you, if you have the time to, to go through them and if it's not this meeting, maybe the next meeting and kind of do it more of a zoning Q and A and I can do that overview. But when I start the overview and, and I'll tell you from my experience with new zoning members, even when I rush, it ends up being, it's adding that onto an agenda with something else is going to be two meetings, so I, that's.
Well, it really needs to be its own agenda. What you're saying is it really needs to be its own agenda, its own meeting.
Or we can break it into two with something else. But I think if I have a better feeling, you know what I mean, as far as you've kind of reviewed some of it, gone through, just to kind of prepare that.
That's good, you know, we should all look it over before we commit, it'd be good if you put that right on the agenda, you know. Members that requested the review in advance.
Or all parents.
Everyone's not here.
Do you think it makes sense to do it at the next meeting or two meetings from now?
Two meetings.
Okay, just.
Yeah, because I'd rather people take a look at the survey for next meeting and then.
And we have the referral, okay, so we'll do that in your first meeting in April. I just left it on that because I didn't know, I mean, we're here at eight thirty, eight forty now.
Just a quick question, you said that affordable housing is allowed in any business district, is that B2, B3, B4?
Yes, so if you look at, and that's what I think everybody kind of needs to review, if you, the eight thirty G. Eight thirty G can go in, if we don't have ten percent of the housing stock, deed restricted is affordable. And that's why we were talking about, Bob mentioned how with Seabrook Station, in ten years, those units are going to roll off. It happened, or yet twenty years up there, they're going to roll off, we're never going to achieve that ten percent.
No, but I'm, I'm.
So.
I thought B2 and B4, reading about it specifically, it says no residents in B2 or B4.
Right, but if, so I would encourage you to review go through some of these handouts for tonight, and, and this is where I think we're all getting a little, there's a lot of information to go through the the eight thirty G and incentive housing, so where Seabrook Station is, the apartments, that's, that was B2. So any B2 and B4, someone could buy the old Seabrook Shopping Center or Max's Place and tear it all down and put housing for eight thirty G. So this is where I think, you know, we need to kind of talk a little bit.
I don't know about that, it said no resident, it says no residents.
But the eight thirty G statute trumps that. So that's how you, these developments come through. So what you do when you have an eight thirty G application is you take all the regulations you read and you throw them in the trash can.
Alright, so that means we just saved two meetings.
Well, the, but the thing is, the, the goal, so the only reason a commission can legally deny an eight thirty G is for public health or safety.
Not traffic.
No traffic.
Don't even think of traffic.
So when.
Not, not on the table.
We had several developments for where Seabrook Station is and when we wrote our reports, we would say you take a whole set of regulations, usually you say, it does not mean traffic, they didn't include this. So you say, well, the applicant should consider installing sidewalks along the road. Because if they're not, if there are no sidewalks, people will walk in the street and get hit by cars and die. You didn't say it that way, you word it better, but these are the things that you, you need to, you know, how you have to form reports and comments, you can't say, put sidewalks in because people need sidewalks to walk on and they're safe. You know, and that's kind of, you have to kind of, you know, someone will get hurt, someone will die, there's a safety issue. And they're, they're kind of, when you write them and you look at what you want, you know, as a planner or a zoning member, it's kind of hard to say, you know, just put sidewalks in, that's what you want to say, or you should put them in, but you have to have that public safety issue. And then you're writing this, you're like, how do I write this? What will happen if there is no sidewalk?
Thank you for the extended answer.
Don't, no problem, yeah, definitely review the eight thirty, everybody should have the eight thirty G, I think we sent that in the beginning and then you had asked for some comparisons for eight thirty G, which Matt Willis, he just went through. This is actually more of the difference between densities, income qualifications. But I'm sure there's something, we can send you the statute again, or if anybody wants to review it, we can review it when we do question and answers.
Any questions? Anything else?
Yeah, due to our committee staff reports.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make this brief, so we did have the final for shore.
Did I pass this round?
Resiliency.
Yes, okay, and extra, oh, this is for.
Yeah, the final for shore resiliency report, the draft report, you know, we had the public meetings last week in three towns for the four towns, the three locations. So a few residents have asked me, you know, what are we going to do with these recommendations? And, you know, we have prior sea level rise reports, we have the latest natural hazard mitigation plan, which is still pending approval from FEMA. So, you know, the questions come up on the status of a lot of these, like for example, dredging South Cove is in the natural hazard mitigation plan and it's in the forshore report. So who owns that? Is it Fenwick, is it the town, is it this committee, is it Public Works? So I was just going to, you know, put a straw man together, kind of a matrix, alright, here's the kind of some of the tactical projects and just talk to different people like, alright, who owns this, if Fenwick volunteers to dredge South Cove, they'll put you down on the table. You know, but and then the stages for each of these, it's, you know, who owns it, is there funding? Is there a preliminary design, is there a final design, you know, this, these projects, some take years. If not, you know, even longer, it's, so we just want to kind of get something to refer to and, and to talk to, so. More to follow on that. That's all I have. Thank you. Anybody else?
So just quick staff report, Doug can kind of give you an overview of forshore. We are in the process, we are this close to hiring a consultant for the new grant, we are still waiting for our official signed agreement from NIFWIT, which we obviously need that, we're working out some of the details with our team and I, I think because there's been a little bit of this meeting fatigue, we've talked a lot over the years about forshore and planning and the next step, even with the consultant, they wanted to have a public kickoff meeting. And our interview team felt, since there's a lot of data collection and a lot of things going on and, and as we've just finished up one resiliency plan, we're going to ask the consultant really to just dive in, start doing your data collection. You know, start your quality assurance, hey, there's a lot of technical things. Get into that and do more of a mid-report, because I think kind of to what Doug's saying is we, we do a lot of planning. And we plan and then we start the next plan and we do the outreach and I think with this particular project, at least for that area, we'll be able to come in and say, okay, you know, here's what we're finding. And, and they'll, so once that's kind of wrapped up, we'll fill you in a little bit more, we'll keep the public informed, but more through Seabrook events and maybe some articles and things like that versus having another public presentation, because as we talked about before, there's just meeting fatigue. And I think that's about it unless you have something for me.
Yeah, just amplifying that, it's about getting these projects more to shovel ready, yeah. You know, we've got a lot of public input, so the next outreach should be, hey, here's the design, any or conceptual design, any comments on this before we finalize it, right?
Okay.
Like motion to adjourn?
Hang on a second.
Second.
Lots of seconds.
All those in favor?
Megan, would you like me to take pictures of the three train stations that I emailed you about?
Sure, that'd be great.
Landscape?
Yeah, that would, um, probably portrait to make a fit. Thank you.
All those in favor? Alright, all opposed, so here stays, thank you very much.